So, uh... Mrs. Feesel, yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick? And Mr. O'Leary?
All right, so we're at our first presentation item. It is the Orange High School hitting and pitching facility. But it's Adam Bellinger, Coach Tom Marker, and Coach Matt Vladig to come out and make a presentation.
Vladig's not here.
Vladig's, Vladig's right here.
He had a better offer.
Mr. Deal, our new Orange Boost Athletic Director's here as well.
Hi.
Is the presentation pulled up?
I think if you just hit the go-forward button, maybe?
There we go. Okay, there we go. So yesterday, we presented just basically our vision for this facility. It's identical to what Olentangie Liberty currently has, with the exception of a slightly higher ceiling. It's two feet higher ceiling, but the exact dimensions, the same exact builder, things along those lines. So we kind of went through a timeline and what we anticipate. And in talking multiple, multiple times with Ty Brenning, he says this timeline will not go as smoothly as it looks on paper. However, those are the timeline, the current timeline that we have. If you look here, that's an overhead view of the baseball and softball facilities. In between the two is a grass area. And you can see where the black lines and the drawing of the outline of the building. We've looked at different possible locations, given cost, and how the other spaces are being used and what we need to do. This is what we came up with and what Kirkham suggested in terms of elevation and things along those lines. We talked about possibly putting it on to the pavement area because it doesn't have as much of a drop in elevation. But then, we thought there would come... Too many things would come up with, you know, losing parking spots and things along those lines where this doesn't do that, so... The size, like I said before, is the same as Liberty's, the 72 by 104. Theirs is 14 by... or 14 feet, 2 inches tall. Ours would be 16, too. So the adjusted height, the garage doors, the man doors and things along those lines, I'm not real familiar, obviously, with architectural drawings and what the requirements are, but Kirkham is, having done this at Liberty. So Liberty's, the base of Liberty's is not concrete. We've looked into doing concrete. We haven't nailed that down completely, that we're definitely going to do that. But we've gotten some different bids on the concrete and talked with Kirkham about what they would charge versus if we outsourced that job. But again, that doesn't need to be made concrete... The concept doesn't have to be solidified just today because that's the last thing that goes in. So it'd be after this structure is completed. And we have estimated turf costs and estimated netting, and we base that off of what Liberty paid for theirs. There's a drawing that Kirkham gave us to share. Again, it's not much different than what you probably saw a few years ago with Olentangie Liberty's facility. And so, more with the loan term amount. So we're financing $4,000 with a five-year term. And you can see how the payments break down. And if you wanted to speak on the...
Yeah, just a five-year term, interest-only payments over the first 60 months. That term doesn't start until the construction period's over, which is... They give us six months to do the construction period. We can stop that at any point and start the permanent financing at that point. So basically, like I said, 12 interest-only payments per year and then one principal payment at the end of every year. So this is just a breakdown of what it would look like over the five-year period.
Who are you financing it through?
Same people we went through for our turf, which was the Tascow Bank.
Okay.
They were great. They seemed to like us. Our financials, the financials at Orange were strong. And so it was, they were really easy to work with.
So is there a revenue stream to back P&amp;I payments?
Next slide.
That's next.
Yeah, and so, so we've worked... When I came from Upper Arlington High School, and so at Upper Arlington, we have a youth organization, UAJBA, which is fully overseen by the high school. And so, and working with the Ambush organization and trying to make sure that all of our kids have a place to play. I've worked really closely with Ambush in saying that we don't want to have an eight-year-old, a nine-year-old, a 10-year-old try out for a sport and get cut. And that could be the end of their baseball career. So what I've told them is we're trying our best, and we did it this year with tryouts and things along those lines, is to give everybody an opportunity to play. Well, with that being said, they also need indoor facility time. And so, they've done rentals through Menino's and through Big League, and they've paid a certain amount of money to go to those places with limited hours within those places. So they've set up a structure on the low end where they would have $50,000 coming in. And that's less than what the kids currently pay for outside use, and they would be able to utilize our facility. And that's similarly similar to what we did at Upper Arlington with our youth organization. So my vision with the indoor facility, and what makes it really good for them to come in with us on this project, is the facility would have cages set up where we could have, and my hope would be, you know, our 12-year-olds are hitting in these two cages, and our high school guys are right next to them. And so we start to get that connection with the high school kids and the lower levels, and us as coaches also get to develop those relationships. So they've agreed to come in at 50 on the low end. They think it'll be higher, but I said, "Well, give me the bare bones." They told me what the low end would be. And then we have, we've only reached out, we haven't reached out to multiple donors. This private donor is actually an individual that utilizes our facility for an adult league in the summer. And he said, "You know, I want to give $5,000 a year to the project." They'll never use indoor time at all. But they just, you know, they've used our facility, our fields, for years and said, "You know, we want to kind of give back in that way." And then, our booster organization, our baseball boosters as well, are able to commit on... Again, this is on the low end of $20,000 a year. That's not dipping into our current fundraisers that we have. So for instance, we did a sub-sale last year.
I love them. Get them every year.
So last year, we changed the sub-sale. We did one at Upper Arlington, and it's been there for years. And we raised over $40,000 in profit at Upper Arlington. Last year, when I came here to Orange, the sale previously brought in a little over five, and we brought in over 17 this year. And it'll only grow just based on how we do the database and things along those lines. So that's a fundraiser. That's not even included in this. As well as donors, we've created a donor board. I don't know if I added it late, but if you've been to Berlin, on their dugout, they have a donor board. And so we've created something similar, but we haven't reached out to those donors yet. So it's just another source of revenue that we're not including on here, as well as our field rentals, which will go directly to this. You know, for a field for a weekend, you can raise, you know, I think for our Worthington Wood Bad Tournament, which is just a weekend tournament, it's over $1,500, it's close to $2,000. And I'm not including that in this either. So I tried to take everything on the low end and say, "Okay, what are the guarantees?" without changing the current experience of our players. So where our current experience for our players, I think, is really awesome. I think they would say the same. I didn't want guys to say, "Well, you know, we're going to have less of an experience and less of a spring trip and less of uniforms and less of equipment because we're having this hitting facility." So if we do need to dip into those funds, we can. But I just don't, I don't foresee that happening because I haven't listed all those little things on top of this revenue.
So will this be a baseball-only facility, or where's softball in the mix?
I envision it being softball. I envision it being, I've talked to Zeb Schroeder and said, "You know, you have one of those days where the lightning hits and you've got to get inside and do a walkthrough." I think, and I've only been there for a year, but I think the coaching community at Orange is strong enough where we work well together. So I foresee softball using it, but I also see it opening up. We currently hit in the aux gym. There's one cage at Orange High School. So we have, we'll have over 80 guys trying out for baseball this year and trying to try them out in one cage. And you also have multiple teams that are trying to use the aux space. So usually in the spring, if you look at the calendar, it'll say 3 to 6 baseball, 6 to 9 softball, or vice versa. And Kalo, Coach Kalo, the basketball coach, will say, "You know, can I get some time in here?" And it's really hard, right? But now this will open up time for those other teams to use indoor facility time as well. So I think, I envision softball using it a lot. Probably not as much as others would see because they'll hit in the indoor cage, you know, or we will in flip-flop, or whatever the case may be. But I just think it opens up time for a lot of different teams. So although it looks like a hitting facility for baseball and softball, I think it benefits a large amount of teams. And we have so many kids that are dual-sport guys as well. So I think football and potentially soccer and other places may come in on that. So that's kind of where we're at with that. And then I just, I put in, I just think this facility is needed for a ton of reasons. But like I said before, we have our guys come in at odd hours right now, especially in the fall in Leonard, because we don't have priority because we're not in season. And I just want to kind of give our, our guys ask sometimes, you know, "Who should we play summer baseball for?" And a lot of people say, "Well, go play for Bo who charges $2,400 for you to play in the summer because you get access to the facility." And I'm trying to offer our guys a facility here so that they don't have to go other places to get that work in.
Can I ask a question about the booster portion?
Yeah.
So is, I'm from the Liberty side, so everything's kind of separate there. So boosters, would that be softball and baseball boosters would contribute? Or is that just baseball?
Yes, somebody asked about that prior to, and we hadn't. When I've spoken with Coach Robinson, with Mason about it, I've never brought up the fact that, you know, would you guys like to contribute? Could you contribute to this cause? Basically, that was mostly just baseball funds and general funds. So at Orange, which I think is different than Liberty and Olentangie, every dollar we raise, 10% of that goes to the general booster fund.
Okay.
At which point, they try to contribute back some of that. So for instance, we bought a hitting pitching machine this year, and they picked up 75% of that because of our fundraising, 10% always goes to that general fund. Now, in speaking with the boosters, if we are raising funds directly for this facility and we earmark that money going directly towards the facility, they won't take out the 10%. So that could be very helpful going forward, too, until the facility is paid off. But I haven't reached, so that's another, you know, another dollar amount that you could say, "Well, if softball says, you know, we're able to give $5,000 or we're able to do this each year," it could definitely help. I just haven't gone that route yet. So like I said before, I think this is the, on the low end. Our hope is to pay off the loan before the five years or so.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions?
I'll just ask, we keep in mind that we've done a bunch of these projects. Three turfs on football, we've done turf on baseball, in the wrestling room. We've done hitting facility. We have yet to default on anything.
Right.
So it's just interesting to, you know, put that faith forward into the boosters that they continue to be fundraising machines that meet their obligations. So I think it's a good project. I think we should feel confident that it'll deliver like the rest of the projects that we've seen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I have a question for Mr. Warren about the parking. So I saw that it's at the end, a grass area at the end of a parking area. And I know parking is a big issue at Orange High School. So I can't tell where that is.
Yeah, we don't lose any parking spots. So we actually talked about that.
Do we need more parking there, or no?
Well, we added the parking because the tennis courts got moved.
That's right, yeah.
So I think we're okay over there, right?
And we actually talked about that. It'll actually be 10 feet off of that parking lot. He originally said, "You know, I can go as little as three." And then we said, "Well, we have high school drivers, so we'd like to go 10 or 20." And so he actually mapped out where you see the power lines on the thing. It allows us to go a lot further. But we set about 10 and then possibly stick, I don't know what you call them, in front of the...
Volleys.
Yeah, in front of the parking spots, closest to the building.
10 foot's actually a code requirement.
Anything else?
No.
10 foot's actually a typical code requirement.
Architect.
There it was. That's why we went with 10.
All right, thank you. All right, so we've got the board presence report. Let's get a couple of small things. So one, it was just interesting, you know, this time of year, on the drive over here, I drove back by Orange High School, Orange Middle School. Fields are full, soccer practice is going on, you've got football practice going on, the band getting ready. Very exciting time of year. School's getting started. I asked my girls, "Are you guys ready for school?" And they're ready. They want to go back and see their friends and get back into routine. So very exciting time of year. Tomorrow night, April, August 9th, at the Zoo, it'll be the Zoo and Tangi event. Great fundraiser for the OEF. I know I'll be there, I think the rest of the board will be there. Looking forward to supporting that great organization that has supported us for many, many years. And then lastly, not to get ahead of ourselves, but it would appear that changes are on the horizon for the board.
I'd say that it's 100%. That there's change.
But based upon who's filed to run, obviously Mindy and I will retain our seats. Lakeisha Wise will be joining us in January, and Roger will be leaving us. We'll have plenty of time to say goodbye to Roger before the end of the year.
I already got recruited back to the facilities committee.
Oh, good. Yay.
Plenty of time to bring Lakeisha up to speed and do some successful onboarding with her as a board member. So it's a great time. I think it's a great, frankly, statement that...
Yes, it is.
We can go two election cycles in a row with, kind of, say, limited opposition, which you can kind of view as a statement in favor of a lot of things that we've been doing over the last 10 to 15 years for some of us. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rafe for the superintendent's report.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Rafe.
All right, well, I want to start off by highlighting a brave life camp. Trent Maddox, now a senior football player at Olentangie High School. He had the idea to start an adapted football camp for students with special needs in our community. And it just was a fabulous event. They did a great job, very well received, heard a lot of positive feedback. And actually, NBC4 picked it up as a story. So it's a lead story on NBC4 news. So I want to give a great compliment to Trent and the team at Olentangie for taking that on. I can only see it continuing to grow. So we get real good coverage of that. We have our convocation next Wednesday, April 13th, August 13th. I didn't want, sorry.
Wow.
August 13th, at Liberty High School. I know you are all invited. It's great, that is Brandy Lust. She's going to be our keynote speaker, teacher and author. She's going to speak about building relationships. I want to give a compliment to Mr. Wright. He's worked with all the principals this year to, you know, he just, he got frustrated at the end of the year. He said, "We spend a lot of time celebrating the end of the year and leaving. We should spend more time celebrating the beginning of the year and starting anew." So since we start this year with three teacher workdays, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and the first two days of the school year are Thursday and a Friday, we're really working with our buildings to work on developing relationships and being very purposeful about that opening. So it's not just get in there, throw a book at kids, and start cramming information down their throat. So really, I think that's going to be a good way to start the year. So thank you, Mr. Wright. We did have our administrative retreat last Monday. And again, I'll give Randy and Chris a lot of credit for organizing it. We had a great event. We were over at Bridgewater. And then focused on wellness and the importance of living a healthy lifestyle was a main part of the theme. But just how we all approach our work and taking care of the people we work with. So that event was very, very well received by administrators. And then that was followed up by our new teacher academy. As you know, the staff are in for three days of orientation, get indoctrinated in the district and how we do things. And they have some time in their building. But that event is really well-received across the board, so.
Quick question?
Yep.
Mr. Meyer, how many of those new teachers are Olentangie grads?
Yeah.
This year? How many of your rookie teachers?
Okay, then you, okay, then don't, no, don't tell us.
Leave us hanging.
No, I'd like to hang on that until we get answers. Thank you.
Teaser, good teaser, though.
All right.
Couple few.
Yeah, and as Mr. O'Brien mentioned, we have the Zoo and Tangi event. Randy's very excited to feed a giraffe. Oh, the sloth. He's, yeah, the sloth. For some reason, sloth is his animal of choice, but looking forward to that. We really, it virtually sold out, so 400 was our expected target, and we're right there. So great job by the community stepping up again. As I've said in my memo, give Jeff Gordon and his team, again, a great job of delivering our 18 new elementary classrooms, six each at Wind, Dot Run, Arrowhead, Nellon Creek. As you know, we financed that with bond money from our 2011 issue. Gets us the space we need for the next few years. We are projected to be, again, out of elementary classroom space. And let's say, as Mrs. Feesel likes to say, for anybody watching or listening out there in the audience, we will, again, be out of elementary classroom space by 2021. So this gets us through that point. And again, I do think it's important to remember that by moving the administrative team into this building and doing these 18 new classrooms, we created 12 classrooms at Shanahan and 18 here. It's the capacity equivalent of a 16th elementary, without assuming the operating cost for a 16th elementary. So I think that was a good path for us. And then just one quick action item of note. We do have three new administrators on the agenda. They were hired here late because we had late resignations. Lenore Angles, previously worked in New Albany. Jen Jury, is it Fury?
Jury.
Sure?
I think he's not even there.
Jury, Fury, is instructional technology supervisor, and James Kim at Liberty High School's assistant principal. They dove right in, and they're doing a great job already. So and then lastly, our important date's coming up. We've got the two teacher workdays, 12th, convocation's the 14th, is that wrong? 14th. Because it's 12th and 13th of the workdays, convocation's the 14th, and our first day of school's the 15th. So, and then our next board meeting is the 22nd.
So the only thing I have today is, one of the September board meetings is the first September board meeting.
It's the first one, yep.
We're going to do it at the DACC.
Correct.
Deloitte Courts Center. Has an opportunity to view that new facility. I know they're having, actually, they're having an open house tonight. Mannequins.
No, it's, oh, well, for the students.
Mannequins up there tonight for the students. And the grand opening's the 15th.
15th, week from tonight.
Our first day of school, the 12th.
But they sort of wait after, right?
No, they start the same day.
They do.
No, they start, Mannequins, 13th?
Yeah, she starts, yes, oh, the 13th, yeah.
She'll go two days just to DACC, and then she'll join back at Orange on the 14th, 15th. So it's exciting, great building, nice facility.
Beautiful.
The September 12th meeting will be at the DACC.
DACC, great.
Taking a field trip. Yep.
All right, any questions for Mr. Rafe? All right.
Thank you.
Just half the year, the treasurer's report, please.
Sure. Good evening to everyone. Just a quick update on a couple of items that have, that we've been talking about through most of the summer. For House Bill 166, or the state budget, biennium budget, two-year budget, was approved by the governor and signed into law. The state budget didn't really create a windfall for our district. We will be getting the wraparound funding that the governor proposed for student wellness or student well-being services. And there's also a component that they added for the average enrollment growth, to give us a slight addition to our funding. That average growth is from, will be measured from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 19. But otherwise, our base funding that we are currently receiving will stay the same over the next biennium. The component of the budget that was in is a line item for allowing or funding traditional schools at the same as chartered non-public schools, per people funding of roughly $1,300, was vetoed by the governor. So that is already out of this current budget proposal and not there for the next two biennium. They'll have to bring it back at the next biennium cycle if they choose to fund that way. And the fair school funding plan, which we talked about a lot through the summer and through the May forecast, did actually come out as a separate bill and was introduced as House Bill 305. So it could potentially be voted into law and perhaps implemented in year two of the current biennium budget. But there's still more information to be determined as it works its way through legislation. And more information would need to come out, of course, is how that would be implemented and work through the actual funding from the state. We have a conference that I will attend next week that will help us walk through the implementation of the governor's proposal and how those wraparound funds and the additional growth funding will be applied, when it will be issued, and how it will look coming from the Ohio Department of Education. So we'll give more, another update when we have more specifics on what that looks like and when, how fast it will come, or if it's coming in a certain cycle, or if there's any reporting requirements that are above and beyond what we report now with those wraparound funds. So more to come on that. There is a storm shelter moratorium was issued to delay that requirement in new buildings through 2020. So in looking at our new builds, that's a conversation to have about whether that storm shelter rule will apply or not apply. And the main concern into that, or the interpretation that we need, is what is the state's requirement for quote-unquote "securing" funding? Does that mean when the issue, when the community votes and gives us the authority to have voted debt? Or is that when we actually sell bonds and secure the cash on hand for that item? So still working through that and getting some information from the state and from council on what those specifics might look like. Because it will impact our upcoming needs as we start looking at future levy needs and asking requirements to fund that. And then in terms of the treasurer's office, it's the end of our fiscal year. And of course, the auditors are back in house. The auditor of states group has come back in. We have officially started our 2019 audit. So we'll be working on that with them through the fall and into winter. We anticipate that it'll be completely wrapped up by December 20th, give or take a few days. But primarily, it takes, that last section takes a little bit longer and into the winter because they have to review our CAFR that we produce for the fiscal year in, our comprehensive annual financial report. So they'll come in and review our books over the next couple of months, and then come back and review that large financial reporting at the end of the year. So we'll, to be continued as we work through that. I believe the board and our finance and audit committee have received the notification that that process will start. And then for tonight's agenda, we just have a couple of general items, amended appropriations, which are just approving budget changes to be compliant with Ohio Revised Code. And then we also have a couple of donations that we would like to recognize from the community. We have $2,000 to 88 Keys Donation Drive from the PNC Foundation. It was a matching gift with Mr. Simon. That was donated to Berlin High School Vocal Music. And almost $13,000 from the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters to Olentangie Schools for girls assistant volleyball coach, cheerleading coach, field hockey assistant coach, and two football coaches. So we greatly appreciate those monetary donations, that they continue to support our students and help those programs grow and give the kids access to things that they wouldn't maybe necessarily have through regular programming. And we also are grateful for all the support our community gives through volunteer hours and in-kind donations. There's a lot that goes on, even though school's not in session, there's a lot of volunteering going on, helping getting everything set up and ready to go for the year. So we appreciate those donations as well. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hattler?
Just in terms of the storm shelter from the facilities committee last night, what that means on the elementary schools is an additional cost of right around $1 million, plus or minus, $750 to $1 million? Just under $1 million.
For new builds.
For new build, right? You don't have to, the storm shelters for an existing build. No, it's not retroactive. So it would be for a new one. So there'll have to be some discussion, consideration of that in the future.
All right, anything else? Do we have any public participation?
No, we do not.
All right, so we'll move right into item 10, the discussion item. This is the intent to rehire retired intervention specialist, or, sorry, intervention aide. Brenda Lucas, Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I first presented this on June 13th. So this is the final step in the process that's required. We have it tonight as a superintendent's assignment to hire Mrs. Lucas. Any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Meyer on that?
I have a question. I just saw, I just pulled up enrollment, 21,972 as of August 5th. So it's 444 over. How are you doing on your classroom space?
We're tight. So we actually just added another fifth grade section because we went over the contractual ratio this week, and we have that all, we hired the teacher and have that all taken care of, so we'll be ready to start school.
Where'd you have to put the class?
Oak Creek.
Oh.
Oak Creek Elementary.
And that wasn't the biggest, the sections that were larger, Meadows and Freedom Trail, but they have no, they have no rooms.
No rooms, add a class, yeah.
Add a class, so.
Yeah.
There are, I think, eight of the 15 elementaries are over 25 per class at the fifth grade. There's a handful of fourth grades that are over, over 20. I mean, I think across the board, we have 15 grade levels that are over the 24 to 1, but we're under the contractual average.
Yeah. And you'll see the ratio at the bottom from K up to five steadily increasing on the enrollment. And as Mr. Rafe had us start when we came on board, I think, four years ago, we've been keeping the projections bi-weekly as far as enrollment, and then obviously next week, you'll, we will see some, we'll see a drop.
It'll pull back.
Yeah, it'll pull back, and then we'll, we'll get an actual seat count first day of school, and then we'll continue to monitor that.
And don't we traditionally drop about 200 to 300 kids, give or take?
I would say average, 250.
Yeah. Even if we drop 250, though, we're still like 200 over.
Right.
Projections. Would you like to hit more toward the middle of the year? Not to say, I mean, we cannot disparage our projections because this is an art that we do, but it's just mind-blowing, you know, the number of students.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Meyer? All right.
Thank you.[1716.13]